And we call this joint session of the Parks and Rec Advisory Committee and the Natural Resources Committee to order.
How do you get in?
What are we starting with today? Introductions, just to real quick, go around the room, say who you are and which committee you're on, or if you're not on a committee, what you do for the city. We'll start with Laura.
Hi, Laura Turway, I'm the Community Development Director for the city. I support Pete and the Natural Resources Committee.
Phil Lewis, Community Services Director, supporting Parks and Recreation for the city.
Sean Dashler, and I'm on Prac.
Bill Daniels, I'm on Prac.
Roger.
I'm not Roger, I'm Dorothy Daultred. The Natural Resources Committee.
The natural resource people get to introducing themselves.
So Roger Follett is Prac.
Doug Neely, I serve on both committees, Prac and Natural Resources Committee.
I'm Joyce Gifford, Chair of Prac.
Matt Cool, NRC.
Lisa Novak, Prac.
Bill Clark, NRC.
Pete Walter in the Planning Department.
I'm Nancy Broschott in NRC.
Mike Mitchell, Prac.
Okay, so we have our agenda of discussion items. Most of you should be able to have them on your screen, and if you don't have a screen, hopefully you picked up a copy of the agenda, it should be in the back. So, discussion items.
I prepared a short PowerPoint with the discussion items.
Perfect.
And it shouldn't take long, we can refer back to these slides. The discussion items that we talked about, which we can add to as well, include funding for invasive species removal in city parks, parks which have a natural resources overlay district, stormwater runoff and quality, additions to natural areas. We're actually going to be talking about signage as well for natural areas in city parks, heritage tree designations, funding for arborist reports to support heritage tree designations, funding for furnishing of plaques, and insecticide uses in city parks. Most of these were brought up as a concern by the Natural Resources Committee, and then the insecticide use I know is a Prac concern as well. And I believe Doug has some additional notes and things.
No, I think anything I have to say will fit any of these.
Okay, all right. So I'm just going to go into this briefly, I won't spend a lot of time on each one, we can refer back to these as I go through them. Funding for invasive species removal in city parks, there are various ways to go about doing this, there are grants available by Metro has a Nature in the Neighborhoods Restoration Grant Program, and the Oregon City Enhancement Grants are also available, in addition of numerous volunteers opportunities, many of you are familiar with these through the SOLV Program, and other ideas. Obviously, the Parks Foundation is working on invasive species removal as well, so. With respect to parks that have the natural resources overlay district, this is a regulatory overlay district that protects habitat and wetlands and water resources, and portions of all the parks listed here have some natural resource overlay district, partially, or in some cases, almost wholly, and they're listed here. I'm not going to go into an individual description of how each of these parks is affected by that, but if you have questions about these, we can certainly talk about that.
I was just going to say, oh yeah, okay, I see. Filbert runs on there, okay.
Yeah, I looked at the city's online GIS map, and if there was any portion of a park that was touched by this overlay district, I listed it. Clackamet Park in particular is entirely within the natural resources overlay district because when the overlay was adopted in 2008, Metro required that cities bring the entire park into the overlay district if it was touched by a Title III or Title 13 resource. You know, we all know that the park has been there a long time, and it has a lot of uses that preexisted this overlay district, so it does create some challenges in terms of management and that sort of thing. These all do. With respect to signage for natural areas in the parks, the goal of this project idea is to educate the public by constructing and erecting signs that indicate the names of perennial streams and wetlands that run through city parks or under city rights of way. This is something that the NRC has put on their work plan, and is also supported by the work of the Greater Oregon City Watershed Council, so we'll talk about that. Stormwater runoff and quality in city parks, anything that runs off of surface in the city, including a park, is part of the regulated permit that the city holds, which is called the National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System, MS4 Permit. It's a big mouthful. In order to comply with that permit, we have to keep our standards up for new development review. One of the ways we've done that recently was upgrading the stormwater and grading design standards, and the erosion control manual regulations. So that gets reviewed yearly through Public Works, and all of the departments chip in on the annual report on this. So we're currently in compliance with that discharge permit, I won't go into a lot of detail about that. But the way that water quality may be affected in city parks is either through non-point source pollution, illegal dumping sediment, shading or lack of shading, and impervious surface runoff, and also invasive species, and other things. So, that's it. Heritage tree designation, so the city has adopted a heritage tree designation process, which is in Chapter 12.32 of our code. The Natural Resources Committee was instrumental in updating that process, and the Natural Resources Committee receives nominations and recommendations for heritage tree and stand nominations, which are then forwarded to the city commission for approval. Any designation on a city-owned property must be approved by the city commission, and there are also on private property as well. Waterboard Park is designated as a heritage grove or stand. If there is a requirement or a need to remove a tree that's designated this way, we currently would process that in Waterboard Park through a standard city-owned property tree permit, so Planning Division would review it. Has to be accompanied by an arborist report that states what the condition of the tree is, and the tree has to be dead, diseased, dying, or hazardous in order to qualify for the minimum replacement ratio, which is one-to-one tree. If it's not any of those conditions, there's a higher ratio of replacement trees required. But the general standard for designation as a heritage tree or a heritage stand is protection in perpetuity as long as the tree is healthy, and needs to be, the public good of keeping that tree outweighs the other decisions. Now, with respect to the need for arborist reports for heritage tree designations, it's very important to have a high-quality, objective, and well-prepared arborist report as a necessary part of any recommendation. That's to be sure that a tree that is designated as a, in perpetuity to be protected, has a, its condition is known. If it's not in great shape, then we need to know that. If it's in good shape, great. If it has any condition which is going to require a lot of maintenance or cost associated with that, the arborist report can make those kinds of recommendations. So you're making an informed decision about the health of the tree, or a potential hazard that might be posed by the tree in addition to its more subjective values as a heritage tree, or a historical tree, or something that contributes to the heritage of the city. Those are also criteria that we review as well, but this one in particular is the one that has a cost associated with it, and the cost varies on the size, age, condition of the tree, and so there's been discussion about where the support for this should come from, should it come from any owner who designates a tree, or nominates a tree for designation? Currently, we have limited funding to do this, so we need to have a discussion about Funding for the plaques, or, when we talk about plaques, you know, I think of the plaque that the city provides as, once it's designated, that's the one that's shown in the picture on the left, but there are also other types of plaques that people can use, that talk about the environmental benefits, or ecosystem service benefits of a tree, which, that is a great idea, and an excellent idea for a volunteer Arbor Day project. And so we've got an example of that on the right side of the screen, and it talks about how that tree has, will give $1,425 of benefits over 15-year period, you know, and stormwater runoff benefits, real estate improvement benefits, and things like that. And finally, the issue of insecticide use in city parks, so, do you want to talk about that?
So, Parks and Recreation Department, as well as the Public Works Department, we do not use any insecticides that are hazardous to pollinators, and so, as a city, there is no conflict there. I know there was a discussion amongst Prac as to the, if there was an interest in the advisory committees in making a recommendation to move forward to commission, similar to what Milwaukee has done in making a resolution stating that, I always get this wrong, neonicides?
Neonicotides.
Neonicotides are not allowed within the city, and are by the city agencies, but then also to make a recommendation to private landowners, also to not use products that are hazardous to pollinators in the bee population. So, that was the discussion item. We have presented to individuals that have asked questions previously of city staff about the types of chemicals that we do use, and again, we do not use any insecticides that are hazardous to those pollinators.
So, we're suggesting...
Can I interrupt you? In terms of regulation that might be put forward, no use in the city itself, at what level other than our advisory committees has this been discussed?
To my knowledge, it has not been discussed beyond the advisory committees.
Okay. So, at this point, we can keep this pretty relaxed and lively, we thought maybe that by the end of this, you guys could help us prioritize at least the top three issues that we want to kind of concentrate on moving forward into 2018 and revisit, but I think this is a good starting point for us, so, thank you. Let me just go back to the discussion items.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
I was going to make one comment, and that is, I think the heritage tree ability has only existed for about, has existed for about five years, I was going to say only, and in terms of private land ownership, I think whether there have been five or six that have come forward, isn't that right?
Yeah, five or six.
And the sign you saw there is one tree that had storm damage, it no longer exists, so that was the example of that.
That's right, the sugar maple.
But, there are a lot of trees that are in public ownership, including ones in the parks, some of them impressive, actually, oaks that are in the right-of-way that the developers had taken the sidewalk around it to protect it in the city, and my understanding is that anybody can request designation of a heritage tree in the public ownership, is that right?
That's correct.
And, we only have the Waterboard Park as a grove, but I'm not aware that we have any trees designated as heritage trees in the parks and other parks, is that right?
Not yet. We have a couple of proposals for two trees on the pool property, and waiting for arborist report on.
It seems to me that this is, this ought to be a priority, since they are, you know, they are properties that we're involved in, the, NRC is under the, is actually Planning Department, and of course, you all are, I mean, you are, the other half of us are in the Parks and Rec, and I think, I think that priority ought to be set to the designation of the heritage trees in the parks.
It seems like it would only take somebody to go out and do an inventory, with most things like this, we need an inventory.
Can I make a suggestion too? Inventory is exactly what we need, however, since I probably nominated half of those trees, my stumbling block, and I want to submit more, except for there's a time limit that you have once you submit it, and if they've not taken care of it within that time, kind of goes into no foul kind of section. I don't know if I put that right, I think it gets into just putting limbo, but like I was going to do, like I'm calling the Savvy Lucky Oaks on Lynn Avenue, which is public, except for we need an arborist report, that's our huge stumbling block. Even though it's on public, we don't have a public arborist, we need volunteers' arborist to even just do our city. I mean, I want to do the cemetery, and we've got people to do it, but we didn't have to have an arborist take a look at it.
I don't know the rules that well. Do we have to have an arborist to designate a heritage tree right now? With our current program, is an arborist report required?
Yeah.
Okay.
Is there a list of the kinds of trees that can be designated? Is there a species list of those?
Yeah, there, it's an eligibility list, you know, basically, it's pretty wide open.
Really broad.
And there's a diameter associated with it, but, and, any coniferous tree over 20 inches is eligible, and any deciduous tree over 20 inches, but then there's also a list of specific species, like giant sequoia, redwood.
I'm having a hard time hearing you.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, there is a list, and it is included in the code section. Any tree that's not invasive, over 20 inches of diameter can be nominated, and then there's a list of species as well. It's about 12, 12 species that are eligible at a lesser diameter, yeah.
And is that on the website?
Yes, on the municipal code.
All right.
Yeah.
What's the rough cost for an arborist report on this?
Generally?
Yeah, I have, just ballpark, I have no idea. Is it a one hour's labor, you know, an auto parts place charges 125 bucks to check my car?
Like all things, it depends, you know, but it can range from $2,000 to $10,000 depending on side.
For one tree?
Depending on the age of a tree, and if you're asking for a condition recommendation or a recommendation on treatment.
Ouch.
You know, because in order to get a full health review, you may have to climb the tree, you may have to do borings, you may have to look inside the cavities to see how extensive they are, those kinds of things.
Is there a way to reduce the criteria to a visual inspection?
Yes, yeah, you can, it depends, if you want a from-the-ground hazard evaluation, that's something that is fairly reasonable, I think. What's your, from, yeah?
I kind of feel like you just gave a worst-case scenario on cost.
I hope so.
I don't know about that.
I know from some that the city has had to pay for.
Sure, if you were talking about a riddled with rot, big-leaf maple or something, but like the English elms at the library, the...
Well, I can't speak to all of them, yeah.
Yeah, well...
Yeah, I would, I would say probably looking at $1,000 per, per report minimum probably would be a good ballpark.
I got a suggestion. Go ahead.
I've got a couple of questions. First off, if a, if a private citizen recommends a tree that's on public property, who pays for the arborist report?
That's the stumbling block that DeeDee has been running into.
Yeah.
Because right now, it's on the burden of the homeowner.
Or whoever, the burden of whoever recommends the tree?
Well, first of all, I have volunteered a couple hundred dollars on some of the trees that have been recommended, but they didn't need a report, so I got away with that. Now I can't quite do that, it's really lies at this point, on the homeowner, and they won't know until an arborist shows up, what it might cost for them to do a report.
For, for one of their own trees?
One of their own trees.
Okay, but what I'm wondering about is, is a private citizen, as I understand it, a private citizen can recommend a tree that's on city property.
Correct.
So then who pays for that arborist report?
I don't know.
That's...
We don't have an arborist. Yeah, this is our stumbling block.
That's, okay, that's one of the stumbling blocks.
Because we actually...
And the other one, and I get, I want to be careful how I say this, because I'm going to sound anti-tree, and I'm not, absolutely, I'm the opposite, okay, I'm pro-tree. But, what, and I apologize for not already knowing the answer to this, but let's talk about Waterboard Park, which is a heritage grove. Do we now, does the city now have an obligation, an additional obligation because of that designation, to maintain those trees, or be proactive in protecting those trees? Obviously, I'm worried about budget, like everything else, you know, and if we, anyway. If I go further, I'm going to sound even more anti-tree, so I'll stop.
Yeah, well, I think the designation implies a certain level of scrutiny to tree care, there's no doubt about it. When the, when the designation for the Waterboard Park was made, it wasn't accompanied by any kind of evaluation of the stand at all, and that was under the older code.
Okay.
So, one of the things that came out of the code update was a requirement to either have a stand health evaluation for a big group of trees, or at least an arborist report of some kind, and, so, and, we also, there was a, basically a tightening up of the level of criteria. There was a site and condition criteria section, which all must be met, and in the heritage criteria section where it's a little more subjective, yeah.
I would say when you're dealing with a grove, you're dealing with a natural system, trees are going to die, trees are going to come in and replace them, and that's part of the natural system. Obviously, if you've got a, if you identify a disease that's going to, can spread rapidly through the rest of the grove, you want to get it out of there, but beyond that, I don't, I don't know if it has that low of scrutiny necessary, because you are talking about a natural area.
Okay, thanks, Phil.
The ones that have either fallen down, you know, I think you guys have been involved in some of those, but, or, you know, if you can, if you know the condition of it, and Parks Department can document that prior to it becoming an immediate hazard, then that we've been processing those as a tree removal permit, like anything else, yeah.
Yeah, so I'll say the Parks Department staff do go through the process of permitting removals for diseased, hazardous, dying trees. Additionally, we do have a couple of trees that have been nominated, and the conundrum that we had as staff was, there was no dedicated funding for arborist reports for a heritage dedication. The Parks and Recreation Department budget is pretty thin, and it's an additional cost that is not currently allocated. We did have a very brief conversation as staff, and I would say that I am probably comfortable processing maybe one tree per season, per year, one tree per year, not per season, in providing an arborist report. So if there's community members that would like to designate a tree as a heritage tree that currently sits on Parks property, and would like to pay for the arborist report, we would gladly walk down that path as well, but to put, as Mike said, it's challenging to find budget for all the many needs of a system, to put additional funds into something that in theory we will protect trees as much as we possibly can within our system, but I think for the city to have a heritage tree program, not to have at least a few of our prime examples of trees noted as heritage trees, is something that we probably need to rectify at some point soon.
I would think it'd be really, I can't see a homeowner wanting to do that if they have to pony up $1,000. I mean, I had a tree removed on my property because it was diseased, and they had to bring in a lift, and it only cost me $1,000 to get it out of there, so, it's, I don't know, it just seems like we're not going to have any trees designated as heritage trees. I mean, I've got one in my yard that I would, would submit, but I'm not going to pay that kind of money, I'm going to protect it anyway, so what's the point?
Yeah, I don't recall paying, actually, anything, but we probably did when we got a tree designated on my property.
Yeah.
Did I get charged?
That was the older code.
That was the older code.
Yeah, yeah.
There should be some way of dealing that, but one of the things, you know, we're now in the current biennial budget, and that's what you're faced with, I think both, both committees should have discussions about, about setting this as a goal for the next budget cycle to actually fund perhaps an arborist. We've got a lot of trees in our parks, you probably, you probably would have a benefit, and the city could collect money from the property owners to, for their designation, but if we have our own arborists, it shouldn't be that expensive.
Well, I'm kind of jumping over, down to the funding on the heritage tree, but you know, I'm sorry.
No, I'm telling myself to sit back for a minute.
We have now, Fall of '18, we will have a grouping of arborists coming out, a first grouping of arborists coming out of Clackamas Community College. The gentleman, and I can't whip his name out, but I bet your friend Seska, Francesca could, he is, he's out of Virginia and written an incredible paper on the benefits of urban forestry, and, so, a little bit, but anyway, why couldn't we work with Clackamas Community College, giving each one of those graduating students some community hours, $250 for every tree towards a scholarship, that they may forego and give it back into the scholarship fund, but we have a graduating class that we need to turn around and say, you want something on your resume? You want to do good for our little Oregon city? There's no reasons why we couldn't give them community credits for this type of thing, everyone needs to get a certain amount of community credits, and, so anyway, and that's Fall of '18, if we've got a budget, and who's ever most connected with Community College that we can help, twist a little wrist on saying, we need this resource right here in our Oregon city.
I have a, out of the box, a suggestion for funding for heritage tree designations and analysis, perhaps even removal. McLaughlin Neighborhood Association filed a lawsuit against a private citizen, as you're probably aware of, that was topping about 35 trees in our Waterboard Park, and it went through a solution in the criminal court, as well as in the civil court, Francesca knows what I'm talking about as well.
I think all of us do.
And, there was a fine assessed to the city of Oregon City. My suggestion is, is that we have a policy for any removal or destruction of heritage trees, or in this case, of heritage grove trees, that that money be put into a fund that's basically for heritage trees. I don't know what the final amount was in this case, but it was substantial, and I think if the fine is enough, where people are, without permits, destroying these trees, that they be fined accordingly, and that's where the money should end up, not in a general fund, so under a dedicated fund. I was the one who suggested the heritage grove trees in Waterboard Park, representing the McLaughlin Neighborhood Association. One of our purposes of was to protect those trees from encroachment from Public Works, and of course, that facility is still under a litigation about the expansion of that facility. So that would be my suggestion, is that we could, as a advisory committee, move that forward to City Commission, and have the city manager on board with that.
Can I, okay, this might be, I mean, not a very good idea, but, or maybe having different, can we make up our own rules, kind of going along here?
Can we make a motion on Bill Daniels? Is this a voting?
Oh, I'm sorry, did I interrupt something?
Normally, we do motions at work sessions, so that usually comes through the regular meetings.
Okay, okay. Because I was going to make a motion.
Did I do something?
No, 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 no.
No. You're fine, Roger.
Oh, okay. I'm on the wrong side of the room, so I was going to be kind of crazy. So if we can, I don't know, if, we, why can't we have for now different levels of nominated tree and that sort, so that we know that, I know they're giving plaques out for the trees that designated, and, but maybe there's another way of putting it on hold so that it's still protected in a way, you know?
Pending report, you mean?
Yeah, so, yeah, so nothing can happen to it, even though it hasn't been okay by an arborist.
But have they want to remove it, then at that point have to bring an arborist's report in?
Or they have to go through some form.
Yeah, some type of...
So that it goes behind, before a designated group that says, well, you have to wait, or, okay, go ahead. That's...
That's a thought.
I was going to say, that could also become a slippery slope. If I wanted to build a building on my property and I need to remove a redwood, my neighbor, if he doesn't like me, could then go and say, and nominate something, and then that could lock it up. And I'm not, I'm not sure.
You don't visualize that we, anybody ought to have the right to designate a tree on somebody else's property as a heritage?
You're just referring to public property.
Or, I think also, a person that's nominating your own tree, but doesn't really want to come up with $1,000 for the arborist.
No, I don't, I don't like that stuff either, but, you know, no. I mean, obviously, there's going to have to be some, you can't just go ahead and do that to get back at somebody else. So there needs to be somebody that goes through to be able to get it in that kind of category. But it doesn't have to be an arborist.
And it always has to go through a review at city commissioners anyway, no matter what.
Whose rules are these we're talking about? Metro rules, city code rules? When you talk about Doug's, Doug submitted stuff under the old rules, and now there's new rules?
Well, that is the heritage tree designation process.
Our own city's...
The city code. And we should also clarify that this city has a street tree code and public tree code, which requires permitting. And the abutting property owner is responsible for the care of the trees in the right of way of abutting their property. And that includes alleys. And we did have a situation, just like you mentioned, where somebody had nominated a tree in an alley, where the abutting property owner, who wanted to remove the tree, would have been under the designation, and the NRC was involved in that recommendation and ultimately recommended against the designation because it didn't make sense. And the owner was allowed to remove the tree as if it was a public street tree and provide 15 trees mitigation as, as the requirement under the public tree code. So that, that process exists.
Thanks for clarifying that.
Sure.
I think funding for mitigation ought to go up too.
Well, to change, to change gears a little bit, one of the comments, I think, early on was funding for signage in parks, and I think that should be a very high, high priority. I don't think it's a very expensive item, and something that Doug's really been beating the pulpit on for several years, and I don't think we've really got a lot of headway, so.
So you're talking about signage not just for heritage trees, but signage for the...
Natural resources in general, in city parks and city-owned properties.
And where the waterways are, okay.
Educational opportunities. We can't miss those.
We're trying to prioritize the top three
Yeah.
subjects on this list here. I think we've, I would like to suggest that, I think that funding for invasive species removal in city parks is the highest priority.
Yeah.
And it touches all the aspects we've been talking about with trees, for example, but certainly, I can use the Promenade Park walkway, for example, on the Bluff. It's horrible to look at if you're a tourist coming up there, trying to look down on what the mill site looks like now and what the Willamette Falls Legacy Project. You leave the elevator and you're walking, and all you see is ivy climbing in through those white oaks on the Bluff. You see Scotch broom coming back again. You see the poison oak, which of course is a native species, but certainly could be controlled, and, and all the grasses that are, that are invasive. So there's an example where I think we need funding for, for removal of those items in the sensitive areas, especially when we're trying to welcome people to this city to, to be able to take a look at what we have to offer. So that's, that's my position on the invasive species.
Yeah, I've seen tansy in our area as well, in the Park Place area. And I'm hearing a lot about tansy and how it's, it's growing right now. It's blooming, and I'm seeing that in our area.
There's a lot in the McLaughlin neighborhood as well. And in Newell Creek Canyon.
It's pretty much everywhere.
And, and it was interesting, because last year, there were just a few tansy in that field that's going to be the entrance to Newell Creek Canyon. And, and I would go out there with my gloves and my shovel, and I'd, you know, pull it up and dig it up and get the tansy out. And, you know, obviously, I didn't get them quite all, and this year, it's just like, the entire field is covered. So I don't know...
One thing I did, there's a, I have a neighbor a few blocks away who has a bunch. And when I walked by a couple of weeks ago, those little caterpillars that eat it were on it. So I'm like, well, at least they've found us, as well as the tansy, but.
Okay. So I hear invasive species removal as, as one of the top items. Does anyone else have another item that they would like to?
Well, the heritage tree, I think.
The heritage tree, and...
And particularly in the parks.
I'd like to know more about additions of natural areas to city parks.
Okay. This is an item, I think, that we all need to clarify a little bit. Originally, let me just talk about this.
I think I know what you mean, but I'm not sure.
I'd like to hear your suggestion. Because I was originally thinking, if it had to do with water resources or wetlands that are not on our current inventory, sorry about jumping around here, then in order to be added to the regulatory overlay district, there needs to be legislative review and an addition and re-adoption of the, of the map, that is the Natural Resources Overlay District. And this has come up on private properties as well in other parts of the city. And our position as staff in response to that was, we will address re-adoption of a map as staff resources allow. If there is a delineation that indicates that a wetland actually is there that's not currently inventoried or something like that, that's one aspect of it. But I'd like to hear your ideas, yeah.
You say, no, there's another one. There's a different item, addition of nat...
Yeah, that's what this slide was, and I meant to, I meant to kind of blend these items together, but, yeah. If you, the question is, what, what are we talking about when we say natural areas? And in, in city parks, are we talking about groves of trees? Are we talking about actual wetland streams, those kinds of things? I'm just asking for clarification of the point, because it was, it was raised in a previous meeting in the NRC, and I just kind of jotted it down, yeah.
Well, it doesn't obviously have to be just streams or wetlands.
Right.
Be anything that's not landscaped.
Thank you. I forgot to turn the mic off. So for just background information, we do have a couple of parks that are dedicated as nature parks within our system, which would include Waterboard, Old Kanema, and Singer Creek are the three parks that, and by the charter, if I'm remembering correctly, it's more of a designation of the types of amenities that can be built within that, that park, which would include no actual structures. You can build pathways and recreational amenities. You cannot build, you know, we can decide to, to build a recreation center or something like that, or...
Ball fields.
Ball fields, yeah, exactly. So that it has to be, to enjoy the natural environment of the, of the facility as opposed to organize recreational activities or physical structures.
The other thing I was thinking is, potentially, it could mean parks that are acquired in the future, which have natural areas next to them, where they're not suitable for recreational active use, but are abutting streams and ravines and things like that.
Like part of Glen Oak.
Like Glen Oak, or areas that are not yet annexed to the city but are in the urban growth boundary, like the Park Place area and the, and the natural resources in there.
Berkeley Hills will fall into that to some degree.
Yeah, yeah.
There, I mean, there are several in which you have areas that probably cannot be used for other recreational purposes. We've got now Berkeley as a dog park, but half of that back, half of the back area there is, is forest, wouldn't even be used as a, as a dog park. And so when we're looking at those natural areas, we want to look at not only the ones that are solely natural areas, but to actually look at ones that in fact functionally have parts of the areas as natural areas, and look at them whether, at some point, there's one, there would be a future use, and if not, probably giving them some kind of designation as well.
Yeah, and I would say trending nationally is more of a hybrid model of having parks that have the natural resources as well as developed recreational activity areas. And the challenge with that is really educating the public, which kind of goes along with the signage question, is really letting folks know why you're letting grass grow longer in certain areas, or why there's, you know, a lot of folks, when they come to a developed park, are really looking for, you know, manicured green grass and dedicated beds for ornamental shrubs and things like that. So it is an educational process when you're, have those kind of hybrid facilities.
What I was talking about was areas that in fact are that way already.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, and, they aren't, they aren't maintained or anything, but they are currently a natural. And unless there was some specific reasons why you'd want to think of other uses for those areas, then maybe there's some, there should be some consideration to giving them a, a different designation.
And then we also have the metro parks, which are but city parks.
Yeah, yes.
You also said we have 14 parks that touch N-Rod overlays?
Oh, I made a mistake. I didn't know it was 14, okay.
I counted them, that's why.
Okay.
Could we make additions of those natural areas and put some signage so in those N-Rod areas, or is that too much jumbled up with private property in that?
Well, no, these are all...
Where we could extend it, where some of those parks might get extended down into...
These are all city parks, except for the last two, which are Kanema and Newell Creek, Kanema open space area.
You know, some of those are, like, I mean, we've got, we've got that whole area of John Storm, Clackamas, and then, of course, eventually, I'm sure the cove properties will come under park management after the development is finished, continue to swat there. But the fact is, those, those N-Rod areas, some of them are already being used for recreational purposes, and I don't know that you'd want to change that, private park in particular, John Storm.
That's what I was afraid of, but I was wondering if possibly so.
I think your idea is a good thought, because what, we, I think we want specific input as the cove has developed and how the peninsula is treated, how the west bank of the, of the cove is treated, as, I mean, they're, they're basically not used for recreational purposes, other than people maybe having a path on them or something of that nature.
Right.
But currently, they're not a park, but my hope is that when in fact that development is completed, all that shoreline will be under the city park system.
So as we're, we're winding down, you know, Pete opened by saying that we should identify, try to identify three of these. And I've heard really two. And maybe the two are big enough or all-inclusive, was, number one is the funding for the invasive species removal, and the other is funding for heritage tree designation. So was there something else that I didn't quite get?
I think Sean recommended the signage one, and I would go along with that.
And that was?
Plaques, I guess it says on here, funding for plaques.
Okay, funding for the plaques?
As long as that line item, plaques, isn't just written for heritage tree signs. I think it's a broader scope.
Yes.
Okay, so that's for all natural resources and streams and...
And maybe, certain trees in city parks, even though they're not designated as heritage trees.
Can I make a suggestion also? If we're going to work and focus on certain city parks, and assuming that we're going to get some city employees, but really a whole bunch of volunteers, we might see who has already a grant written, because if we can gather up volunteer hours to help fulfill a grant obligation, then we should say, we should hit Waterboard Park instead of Kanema, because Waterboard Park already has a, a grant ready to roll that we need the volunteer hours on. So we might see who, who's got grants going before we just jump in and start ripping out stuff.
Well, there's a four-county weed management association that I talked John Lewis into assigning an employee to from a public works perspective, but they have funding, and that's right here in this area. They have regular meetings. I guess at the time that I talked to the city about it, I was thinking it was from the public works perspective more, but the money's there. There is money there. Again, I have to ask the question, do we know the size of the problem? Weeds in parks. What's the size of the problem? We know Waterboard's covered with poison ivy. What about the rest of the parks? Do we have an inventory? Do we know what the weeds are? You can't go out and look for grants and expect to be successful without having some basic information. Most basic on weeds is, you got to know what weeds you're fighting.
I, I would say we do have, we do have a, you know, spray program where we go and do some spraying for, for weeds in our system. We do, you know, the park operations manager could probably pretty quickly go through and I, you know, write, write a memo to say, you know, what types of invasives we're dealing with in a variety of different parks. Part of the issue that we run into is the number of licensed, certified spray licenses that we have within our system, staff time within our system, and then hitting the, that kind of sweet spot of when to spray specifically, and making sure that we have enough folks to go out and do that. So we've, since I've been here, attempted to identify additional staff to receive certifications. There is, you know, been more work with the Park Foundation and other nonprofits to try to do more invasive removal projects.
How about the Clackamas Soil Conservation District right next door to the Planning Department, in the same building? Is anybody working with them?
To my knowledge, park staff are not currently working with them.
Yeah. Those are the weed control people, and that's how I got involved with the four-county weed management association, which is open to anyone to join. Yeah, the ivy's a huge deal. I'm not aware of the other issues we have in the parks, but...
We have Scotch broom and...
Areas clematis.
Clematis. Clematis, yeah. A lot of ivy.
A lot of ivy, yeah, it's a pain.
Before we leave, I want to ask two questions. Pete, back to the heritage tree thing. So I'm very ignorant on the subject. So give me a one minute or less explanation of why somebody should designate a heritage tree. Why do I want a heritage tree in my park right next to my house?
The original idea behind this was voluntary recognition of heritage trees on your property. And then if you designate your tree in perpetuity and you sell the property or you pass away, then that tree is protected through a legal covenant. It grew into designation of trees on public property as a consequence of the public process that I described earlier. And that had the support of the city commissioner at the time.
So that answers my question perfectly. So it's a city code. The commissioners can make the rules. Why don't we, as groups, consider recommending that they change the rules? So something such as if tree is greater than certain size in good visual health by a city staff member older than 50 years.
Staff member of the tree.
Staff members older than 50.
But, you know, if it meets a certain set of criteria, that it's exempt from the arborist report or an extensive arborist report, for example, and it's designated. Because, I mean, the purpose of this, to me, I believe, is so that when I'm walking with my five-year-old daughter through a park, I can educate her about this tree. It's been here this long, here's the benefit of it, here's a sign for it. Why do we need to pay these $1,000, $2,000, $10,000 for these things? I mean, it seems like we could almost break the dam open on some of these on-city property trees if we rewrite the rule.
And you would only be fined $300 if you did chop it down. There's only a covenant protection of $300 on heritage trees. I suggest we raise that.
This was the perfect opportunity for getting into fundraising.
I'm having a hard time too with why would I designate my tree to be a heritage tree if it's going to cost me $1,000?
And our focus is on park property. So with park property, let's change the rule. We're the ones writing the check for it.
Yeah.
Yeah, if we're just talking about park property, totally different story. And I think Bill's, Daniel's suggestion about the fines is right on.
I just wanted to reiterate again the process to how we came to where our code is now. So as all codes, we go through lots of processes and committees. And as we were referring to earlier, we had a prior tree code, which we adopted as a community and a public process. And then we worked heavily with the Natural Resources Committee to amend that code to what it is today. And so we can certainly always work to amend the code in the future. But that's sort of why we're at where we're at, because it wasn't working then, so we made a tweak. And then when you adopt a lot of codes, this was happened, you don't really realize what the consequences are until you have the code, and then you kind of find out all those loopholes and problems. It sounds like the bigger issue is to look at the standards for the tree code instead of focusing on nominating, maybe it's a separate issue, focusing on nominating more trees, perhaps doing signage in parks not even associated with the heritage tree program. So looking at, you know, your educational opportunities for natural resources. But then the bigger kind of issue, we kind of keep talking about the $1,000 in the tree arborist. And there are certainly good reasons why we put that into the code for an arborist report. But the bigger issue would be to look at the code language itself and to determine if we want to amend it again. And then looking at what those processes are. There's certainly a lot of legal restrictions and things like that, like the fine. There is a reason why it's the $300 a day, and there's a little legal reason why, or $300 total. But the bigger issue seems to be that looking at our code language in general and seeing if we could tweak it, we can certainly go through any process and tweak our code. But that does seem to be a bigger work product as far as your top three.
I have one more question. It's been bothering me for a few years, actually. We have signs in our city that Oregon City qualifies as Tree City USA. What does that mean?
It means that you have to meet four criteria set by the Arbor Day Foundation. You have to have a tree code, and that means a public tree code. You have to spend at least $2 per capita a year on tree care and maintenance. You have to celebrate Arbor Day, and you have to have a tree board, in which case the Natural Resources Committee is our tree board. So we meet all four of those criteria, and we applied for that status and got it. And then you reapply every year. You tell them what you're spending yearly, et cetera, on tree management, et cetera.
So we prioritize the fact, at least in this city, and as a lot of others deal with that same sign, that we're proud of our trees and we'd like to keep them and keep them healthy. And I think that to do that, one of those avenues is to, perhaps through education and through the pocketbook, that the fines be to the point where they're punitive and not just cost of doing business. And that's in retrospect, looking at what we're trying to accomplish in this city and certainly with that status that we'd like to have as a Tree City USA, that we're proud of our canopy and we'd like to protect them. And that's just something I would like to see us go forward with, with punitive fines that make, that hurt when people have knowledge what they're doing is not correct. And secondly, having that money directed into the same program so that maintenance and enforcement and signage can all be incorporated to kind of be sustainable.
Well, I just want to clarify that when you say, when you say that, you have to be clear about what type of trees you're talking about and where they're growing. Because we have four separate codes that deal with trees. We have the public street tree code, we have the heritage tree designation code. We have code that regulates trees that are in for development review. We don't regulate trees on residential private property currently. And I think what people have been talking about over the last few years is should Oregon City go there or not? And if you decide to go there, then you're looking at becoming a city that has a type one, type two review process for tree removal on all property, residential, commercial, and otherwise, which is a significant political process as well as a code review process and a legislation type thing. So just want to make sure.
I think the biggest concern is to get people educated about the heritage tree program and make it affordable to the residents. One of the things, my understanding is, if you chose to have a tree as a heritage tree, then basically goes on your title as well. So anybody that's going to come and purchase that house recognizes that that tree is a heritage tree. And that's one of the reasons I was able to sell my house to the person that had it, because I had a heritage tree on it.
But it should be protected more than just by $300.
Well, I'm not arguing with that at all.
But I
Yeah.
Well, and that's, my question was really trying to stay very focused on the, this meeting's purpose between parkland and heritage trees. And so how could we alleviate some of the problem that, you know, I think any of us could probably leave and in 10 minutes designate a tree on some of our parks? That probably would qualify very quickly, but who's going to fund it? Well, if we can possibly adjust or fix the funding mechanism, maybe that's our answer, at least in that narrow scope.
What I would say is that both of our groups, we need to take them back to our own groups for further discussion. And I can see where Prak is going to be talking about, you know, does the code, city code need to be amended? And, you know, when and how, and how we can do that? Or can we get some private funding group to step forward with a few thousand dollars to get an arborist in or find a volunteer arborist that's graduating from Clackamas Community College that would donate some hours to designate the trees to evaluate the health of park trees.
I might add just one other thing. I think we ought to think about ahead of time, the next two-year budget cycle, after we have these discussions that looked at it, whether we want to make recommendations that in the budget itself, funding is provided to maybe even higher arborists or something of that nature. But that's something, we've got our current budget, but to look at that in the longer term.
Okay. Looking for long-term, also looking funding for signage. And I can see where a lot of signage goes through a grant possibility process. So looking for grants to get those signs. And then invasive species removal, which the Oregon City Parks Foundation does currently have a grant. And we are looking for volunteer hours at Waterboard Park. So if you happen to be going through Waterboard Park and you want to pull some ivy, take some pictures, jot down the times, and let us know your volunteer hours.
Or go to Old Canema on the 29th. And then directly afterwards, there's a whole bunch of people going to head right over to Waterboard Park and rack up those volunteer hours.
So, and that does make a point that we hope to see a lot of you there at Old Canema Park at nine o'clock Saturday morning. Okay, any other questions? Or are we going to close this meeting?
Thank you very much. I've got your top three and the notes that you've given me on those. So appreciate all your input on this, and we'll follow up with our group as well.
So we're five minutes over time where Prak is supposed to be starting their meeting. So I'd like to take just a couple-minute break, get a drink of water for myself, and come back. Did you have a question? All right, let's close this meeting.